Next meeting is being held remotely over Zoom in accordance with Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.1 as extended. And the public hearings for each of the 10 items on the application on the agenda tonight have been, will be held in accordance with Governor Cuomo's executive order 202.15, which has also been extended. Members of the public have been given instructions about how to participate in tonight's meeting, which is being streamed live on L V dot org and also broadcast on channel 35 on FiOS and channel 76 on Optimum. Rich, do you want to give the email address of how people can email if they're watching and they want to submit a question?
Sure. So if anybody has a question, email would be public QC P U B L I C QC at townmamarinickny.org. And I'm actually going to change my name to my email address, so I will monitor both of those emails.
And that email address was also included in the notices that went out. Francine, can you confirm that tonight's meeting has been duly noticed?
Yes, I can.
And can you also confirm that the applicants have complied with the requirements for mailing notices?
Yes, all mailing notices have been received and all signs were posted originally.
Okay, Irene, as vice chair, I turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, whoops, am I, just give me a moment. I got a text from Greg Lewis asking for the connection. Did someone send it to him? Are you on?
They're in the
Okay, good, good. Okay, great. I was having a lot of trouble with my getting on, my computer's acting up. So hopefully, hopefully it'll be all right with meeting, the rest of this meeting. Just a second. Let me try to get back to, come on. Get back to. Wait a second.
I'll read application number one, case number 3220, Angela Marietta Zamuda, 32 Manor Road, requesting for one story addition and front steps on the premises located at 32 Prior Manor Road and known on the tax assessment map as block 506, lot 284.
Hold on, I'm trying, I've lost my screen. Let me try to get it, get it on so I can see.
We can see you.
I know. How do I get it so I'm on full screen instead of just little boxes? Does anyone know offhand?
In the upper right hand corner, you should see a view. If you click on view, you can change it to speaker view versus gallery view.
It just doesn't look right.
Or if you're in a, if you're in a narrow column, there should be a little box in the upper right hand corner. You just click on that and it will, it will expand.
It looks
A little, little square. Did you click the square?
There's, I see a like a single bar, a double bar, I mean R's not, hold on. This is very, oh, hold on, if I can, it's got all these, my husband turned the computer off. And so I didn't realize it was off. I had to turn it on and I'm trying to get out of stuff that automated has. And all other kinds of things. All right now. See if I can get.
Somebody got, is that you making that noise, Irene?
That, that's my husband's medication alarm and he's upstairs at the moment. I have to get him. I will go turn it off in just a second. I see it. I have a list of attendees. How do I get to full screen? Meeting, I have exit full screen, but I don't see full screen. That's what's throwing me.
You're just trying to promote all of Zoom to a full screen?
I, I don't have any Zoom on right now. I don't, I don't have anyone on right, I have nothing. I mean, I have emails.
Are you on a Mac or a PC?
I'm on Mac.
Then you should be able to look at your ribbon on the bottom and see Zoom and click on the Zoom.
Got it. Thank you very much. All right. So. Do, so let's start with the first.
I'll add that into the record. So it's Angela Miata Ettinge is, and Greg Lewis.
Yep.
Just make a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, great. Second. Greg, are you there? Are you representing the homeowner?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
You see me now?
We can see you now.
Yes.
Now you wish it was paged instead of me.
Well, she looks like she's in the wings. She must be Lewis and Louis.
We've got a couple of projects tonight for y'all. How are, how's everyone? I am here. Jay and Angela are in the, I don't know if they're on the screen. They texted me that they were in the webinar. Do you want to bring them in as well?
Sure.
If you see anyone waving there.
It says they are here.
There's a cutest couple, so you should be able to find them.
Just give me one sec. I just can't get the Lewis and Louis on there.
I'm gonna check the text.
There you go.
There's Jay. There we go. Hey, Jay and Angela, how are you?
Doing well, thank you. How are you guys?
Look at that tan. Holy cow. Anyways, we're here tonight. Jay and Angela invited me to meet with them in the wintertime and said they had two main requests. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight. One was that you'd love to open up their kitchen and create a new kitchen space. And then the second request was, can you do something with the architecture of our house? We're not really that excited about our, our house, the, the curb appeal of the house. So in that sense, we came up with a new design and with a new front porch, a new side addition and then a small den off the back. And then we have a patio at grade on the back of, on the side of the property. So we're in a corner lot. So I'm going to share screens here and walk you through my presentation. And then I can, you can answer some, I can answer some questions after that. So if I did this right, are you seeing the blue house here?
Yes.
Excellent. Let me zoom in a little bit. So this is 32 Prior Manor Road. Actually, I probably should introduce myself. Gregory Lewis, Lewis, Lewis Architects. And it's got this blue siding and it has some funky additions that were done over time. I just hope Arthur Wexler didn't do it. I just, I always gotta be careful. So it's got this weird, it really doesn't have a front portico canopy or anything. And then it's got this bay here and the stone kind of just goes up. These windows, windows shorter here. And then this is a view from more the east, looking back to the west. This is the side as you come up onto Prior Manor. These are some of the neighboring properties, just to give you a sense of the neighborhood. And we also marked off the proposed addition as well. I'm sure some of you guys went by. So Prior Manor is down here off of the post road, kind of weave our way down here. And this is a, a pretty prominent corner as you come into the neighborhood here. Then we are in a flood zone here. That's just a map of the, of the area. So it's at the corner of Prior Manor and Pheasant Run here. So basically, when you approach from the post road, you're approaching this way toward the side house. I'm just going to show you the existing site plan, just to give you a sense of what's going on with Zoom up just slightly here. I'm always intimidated because Jay is a graphics presentation guy and IT guy. And he's probably just cringing at my, my skills on Zoom here. He's laughing. Anyways, existing two-story house, existing driveway to the street. There's a front stoop area here, steps down the sidewalk. And then there's this strange existing deck that is on the front left side here. You can see the existing setbacks are 30 on the front, 30 on the side front here, 25 in the rear and 10 on the right. So most of the houses within the setbacks, except there's some areas where they missed when they framed it, whatever, 30 years ago. The proposal that we're asking for is a front porch addition here. Kitchen addition here and a crosshatch, a little fan room back here. AC units actually in the setback. So there's no variance for those outside the setback, I should say. And then a stone patio on, on grade here, not raised at all. So steps going out here. So the variances are for the front yard setback. Here, we're 30 foot required to the porch. We're talking 20 feet. So it's a 10-foot setback. Overhang is 18.7. So it's basically 12 feet, 11 and a half feet to that. Then on this side, we've got a 21, 30 foot's required on the side front. And always your corner lots, we always have these issues of the additions. This was, this was a lot inside a street, not on the corner. We, we wouldn't have these issues, but we have a side yard setback here of 30 feet. And the most extreme one is 21.0. So we're likely for a nine-foot variance here, just literally for this overhang at the steps. Let me run through the floor plans. I'm going to skip the existing and just go to the new. So the interior work that we're doing is this is the addition. We're, the kitchen's actually here as a kitchen dining room. We're expanding it into the addition here and creating a large island. And then we're proposing doors from the dining room out to the front here with a, a front porch here and the steps down. The new, what, these are AC units relocated. We'll have bushes around those. And then a small den off of the kitchen area here, steps down here. Sorry for my screen here. And then a patio again at grade. So this, everything in the patio is allowed by code. The variance issues are here at the addition for the den and the, and the steps coming down. And then on the front yard setback, you see here, the lighting plan is here for exterior lighting. We're doing mostly landscape lighting, uplighting, and then some lighting above the, excuse me, a wall scunt at the back door and then a couple of downlights and a ceiling fan on the outside. These L's stand for landscape. So those are just in the bushes shooting up on the house, the proposed house. So this is our existing front elevation. And you really just see how kind of awkward it is. And this is our proposed front elevation. So the idea is to create a focal point and some interest, visual interest at the corner and kind of make this the focal point when you approach the house from the street and from the, straight on. And then as you come at, at the angle there. And then we're changing the siding a little bit over here. This is more architectural review than the zoning, but just kind of creating a little white spot here. So right now the siding comes on here. So the whole idea, and this is, you know, this is completely a a zoning request that's driven by architecture, that we're just trying to create a more dynamic and creative house. And it's really what it is. But, you know, I'm a firm believer, if we can improve something and we need to get a zoning variance, that's why we're here. And that's what we're asking for. And I, I completely understand the rules and the setbacks, but I think on this one, and I'll show you another picture, we're dramatically changing the architecture and the house to hopefully improve the aesthetic. So this is the existing right side where you see the deck as you approach from the side here. And now we're proposing, this is the side elevation, again, metal roof, windows, back door, just trying to add some character, overhangs, some raised panels in this section to simulate an old porch that was filled in. And then working our way around here. This is the backside of the rear elevation. And again, just simulating a porch kind of being filled in over time. Again, just add some character to and changing the material. If I'm getting too much into design, let me know. These are letters, the zoning data, but let me show you, I've got a perspective that I'm hoping you'll like. Did you, does this come up on your screens?
Yes.
Great. So again, the goal here is to just change the aesthetic of the house. And this is the view that you would see from the corner of the property, looking back. And we're proposing stone columns here, some picket railings, some columns, metal roof, gutters, obviously. And then this is actually the kitchen area on the left, outdoor porch here. And then kitchen, the two windows on the left is kitchen and a little den area. And again, it's just an attempt to try to create a, a better curb appeal on the house. And most of the impact is on the porch area. The porches, you know, with zoning laws and the way houses have changed, porches went away. But yeah, I'm really trying to bring a lot of porches back in our designs and just neighborhood interaction with people and softens the facade and adds more shade and shadow to the facade. But I, I think you've seen some of my work around the village or maybe I should, I should do some pictures sometime. But a lot of our houses have porches and just for us, it just adds character and quality to them, to the, to the house and to the neighborhood.
Who's that on the front porch?
These people?
I don't see anyone with curly hair.
Yeah, that's, that's Angela and Jay saying, thank you. Come see, come visit us. So if you'd like, I could go back to the site plan or the zoning map, whatever you guys want to do.
I think you should go back to the site plan. You know, I had the opportunity to walk the property. And I think you should bring to everyone's attention how this is burdened with a very large right of way. I paced it off and from the street, it is actually greater than 30 feet.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's a good point. Just make it a little smaller here. Yeah. So actually, the right of way is quite large on this property. Let me just slide this over if I can. Jay's gonna make fun of me tomorrow. Okay, great. So here's the existing property line. Is this line here where my cursor is? And we must have a good 15 feet here. It kind of pulls out around here. So the distance from the street is actually much greater than just the property line.
But the I added it just over 30 feet at the shortest distance.
Yeah, that feels about right. If you take half of this, you're probably a good 35. I could, I could do in the autocad and check it exactly, but you could, you could just proportionate. Here's 18 feet here and it's maybe 15 feet here.
And I had almost 28 feet on the side yard, which is
Yeah, yeah. I appreciate, that's a good point.
I guess, well, that, that makes a good point because my big concern was on the front porch and on one level, you said, how many outdoor eating areas do you need? But given the distance, I'm more comfortable given Jonathan's observation about the right of way, which I hadn't picked up before. Good. What other comments do people have about this? I mean, I'm fine with the side, side addition myself. Anyone else?
I'm assuming that you're, there's currently a porch there that has just a dirt underneath it, underneath it?
The deck, yeah, there's just dirt under the deck, yeah.
Right. So you're going to be filling that in because you're putting an addition, plus you're doing the patio area
Exactly.
behind it. So are there any flooding
No, no, that's a great question.
porous area concerns?
It's a great question. We, we've held off on hiring the engineer to design the, the flood protection system, but we have proposed, I'm anticipating drywells in the yard here. But we'll hire a professional civil engineer to design that and submit. And I believe we'll have harbor coastal control because we're in the flood plain, if that's right, Rich.
Right.
Yeah. So there'll be two more. There'll be peer review and also the coastal control review board as well with the submittal. And after we hire an engineer to actually design the system.
Oh, wait. So this is going to, it's
Actually, I'm sorry. I answered that too quick. It depends on how much you're disturbing, Greg. I'd have to look at that if you'd have to go to coastal zone. I mean, you'll go
Oh, yeah, the, the actual impact, I keep forgetting about that. The actual impact is small, so we may not have to go. It'll be the peer review that'll decide whether
Yeah, you'll do a peer review and then you're, I mean, you're going to have to go through erosion control and sediment, erosion and sediment control permit.
Exactly.
Rob will definitely look at, you know, the town engineer will be looking at your
It's only a 3.3% increase in lock coverage, taking you to 29.1% with 35% allowed. So
Right, we're under our lock coverage.
From Robin, from your perspective, you're asking, you're not going to have a significant addition to run up and other stuff. And they will have to address anyway the wrong situation when they, you know, develop their plans. Particularly because this is in a flood zone and we know that area. So, and you've had, I think, only a 10-foot total elevation on this property.
Yeah, they're, they're committed to doing it the right way with a civil engineer. We just, again, we wanted to wait to see if we were going to get the, everything approved before we committed to the calculations, because the calculations are based on the square footage of coverage. So if we, if we can't get the porch, or if you want me to expand the porch, and you might need a bigger drywall, we're open to either.
But from my perspective, because of this right of way, had the property line been at the street, which is typical in most of our communities, right, we probably wouldn't even be talking. So
I appreciate that.
That's why I would say that the, that's why I would say that the variance is actually minimal.
All right. Any other questions or observations from the board?
I still note, none of the neighbors have any issues.
Jay, were you able to reach out to anyone?
So we were able to talk to each, each on, of our neighbors on each of the three sides and they're all actually excited for us. So that was pretty cool.
Could you guys hear okay?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm getting old. I can't hear.
And just so you know, I have nobody emailing or raising their hand for me.
And was this application duly noticed?
Shall we, Rich, are there any questions or anyone in the audience who wishes to opine on this application?
Give them a second to raise their hands, but I'm not seeing any hands. I have no emails on either of the emails.
All right. All right, is sounds like excuse me?
Motion to close.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to close this hearing. Great. Does anyone want to do the motion on it?
I can do it if you want.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, file number 3220, Angela and Miata, I'm going to bastardize the last name, Zamuda?
Yes.
Okay, 32 Prior Manor Road, Larchmont, New York, is seeking a variance for an addition of front steps and side yard variance, both for setbacks. The proposed front addition in the front yard will be 18.7 feet with 30 feet is required. And the proposed front portico will be 21 feet with 30 feet is required. Proposed front steps will be 21.7 feet with 30 feet is required. And the proposed front additions will be 21.3 feet as proposed. This is already an existing non-conforming structure. So these changes will also increase the extent that the building is non-conforming. The board in looking at this application took into account of balancing the benefits to the applicant with a detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the community. In doing so, it considered whether an undesirable change of the neighborhood character or the nearby properties. The board finds that there will be no adverse effect on the character to the nearby properties. There's a significant enhancement to the house through the architectural design that was done. The house already utilizes a deck that it's exposed to the outside for dining and sitting purposes. It's just being relocated and expanded. Whether the, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, there obviously could have been other approaches taken to doing this expansion. But the applicant wishes to expand their kitchen area and make the first floor more usable. So it would seem that although there might be other alternatives, this seems to be the least effect to get the benefit that they desire. Whether the request is substantial, the board finds the request is not substantial for the following reasons. This house is burdened as a corner lot, even though it faces Fireman Road. It also abuts to, what's the other to Pheasant Run. Pheasant Run is really the side yard that's there. In a normal situation, it wouldn't have a setback of 30 yards, but at 30 feet, but it is considered a front yard. It actually is screened by the applicant and actually coming to this corner, the new design will actually create a facing area that actually is probably more appealing that is there. But also it is burdened with two large right of ways on both Pheasant and on Prior Manor. Actually, from the road, you do have the full 30 feet that would be the normal setback. The board is finding that this is not substantial because the house is still set back 30 feet from the road itself. And just that it's burdened with both that right of way and the corner create that hardship. Whether it will have any adverse physical or environmental effects, the addition will only have marginal potential effects that will be mitigated. We will have to deal with additional drainage requirements because there's an increase of approximately 3.4% in the overall coverage, but the coverage ratio is well less than what is allowed at 29.1 compared to 35-foot block coverage that's allowed. It will not have any other effects on air or light on any of the neighbors. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, the board will find, yes, it is self-created because the applicant seeks to expand their house. But it is non-determinative in this matter, respectfully submitted. You good, Lisa?
Are you saying? Okay, I'll second.
Thank you, Irene.
Your volume's a little low, friends.
Yeah, your volume's low.
Which is, which is odd for you.
Everybody vote yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Look, I have a question since I couldn't get on until a little after seven. What's going on with Country Lane and Westbrook Side? The signs were missing.
They were there originally.
They were there today when I, I was there.
Yeah, Westbrook Side has, has have a sign also on Lansdowne. And there was no sign there Monday.
All right. Well, let's take that, what, once, you know, when the application comes
Fine, 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 fine. Go ahead.
Application number two, case number 3221, Sarah and Timothy Dillon, 11 Spruce Road, requesting an addition and air conditioning, condensing unit on the premises located at 11 Spruce Road and known on the tax assessment map as block 115, lot 334.
All right, motion to open the hearing.
Second. Thank you.
One sec.
Has been duly noticed.
Hi, everybody.
Evening.
Would you like me to begin? My name is Lisa Mokler from Mokler Taylor Architects. And we're representing Sarah and Tim Dillon at 11 Spruce Road. Would you like me to share my screen to, to go over? So can everybody see my screen? Okay. So we're looking at a site plan here and what we're proposing is a first story addition of a kitchen underneath an existing second story, cantilevered bedroom. And off to the side here, bathroom. We are, I'll show you the, the plan. This is the existing first floor plan on the left. On the right is what we're proposing. Existing plan with, we're proposing to add a front entry with a front door under the existing roof line. Existing plan with, we're proposing to add a front entry with a front door under the existing roofline that is there right now, so we're not coming out any further than that existing overhang of the front door. And then we're looking to expand the kitchen towards the back of the house in this area underneath the existing bedroom that's above. And proposing a bathroom on the first floor. Also, there's not an existing bathroom on the first floor. And the Dillons would like to have one because their elderly parents are having a hard time getting up and down the stairs. So, let me show you the, the second floor. This is the second-floor plan. This is the bedroom right here that we're building underneath. So, the, the lot right now is existing non-conforming on this 10-yards side setback. We are at 5.9 square feet existing, and we're not increasing the non-conformity. We're building right underneath it on this side. We're meeting our rear yard setback of 25 feet. And we're, this is where that little jut out for the bathroom is going to be. And in the front, we're well within the 30-foot front yard setback. We propose to build underneath the bedroom so that we wouldn't increase the bulk on the property. And then, the second portion of the variance is we're proposing to locate the two new condenser units on this side yard right here. Existing one-story family room right here is non-conforming, existing non-conforming at 5.9 square, 5.9 feet. And we're proposing that these HVAC units be tucked in from the front of the house. And our new proposal would be that the HVAC units would be about eight and a half feet from the side yard on that side. So, for the exterior elevations, we have the existing elevations on the left here and the new proposed on the right. This is the front elevation proposed, so this is, right here is the existing front porch roof. We're building right underneath that, and then steps to come out from that. So, we're matching all the existing crown moldings, details, et cetera, on the front of the house. And the HVAC units are right here, if you can see my cursor right here. And then, this is looking at the side of the house, the west elevation, looking at the condensing units here. Our proposed addition underneath the existing roofline overhang here, steps and stair railings down. And then this is our proposed first-floor addition towards the back of the house. This is the rear of the house, so right now, this is the existing rear elevation with two columns holding up that second-floor bedroom, and we're proposing to infill that, adding doors into the new kitchen. And this is the little side piece right here, which is part of the bathroom. And then this is the other, other side of the house where we're seeing that front yard, that front entry addition. And then right in here, we have our new addition. And then some pictures, we have the pictures associated right next to this here. This is the existing, we're infilling. This is the existing backyard, back rear elevation, we're infilling there and here. And then this is the existing front elevation, and this is that porch that I'm talking about that we are building underneath to create this new entryway. And right here is where those HVAC units would be located.
There are no current units on the property?
No. No. I have one question concerning the air conditioning units. In your application, you say approximately 8.6 feet. Are you sure that it will fall within that? You don't want to have to come back if, if your, your measurements are off at all. So, are you confident that that will, 8.8 and a half feet would achieve what would allow you to be within the variance?
Yes, I'm very confident about that because we could, you know, we, we wanted to tuck them in from the face of this garage, and we allowed ourselves plenty of airspace around those and separation between the two.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And what is, what is the visibility for the neighbors? There's a wood fence there, so.
Yes, there is a fence right along here. And the house sits up pretty high from the, from the street here. Let me see if I can.
It doesn't do it justice. You're really looking very straight up at this house from the street on Spruce. And you, you won't see the air conditioning compressors from the street, and the neighbor won't see them. I just had a bigger concern that I didn't see any specifications for the air conditioning units in the package. Were they provided?
They were not provided, yet. We're still bidding the project out, so we were waiting for the HVAC companies to suggest what they would like to use there. But we didn't want to go too far with the bidding process until we knew that we could possibly do this project.
Well, typically what happens when you're coming before a zoning board, one of our concerns is the effect on the environment. And the effect of an air conditioning unit typically is sound. And having a very low dB rated compressors, especially when you have multiple compressors that are there, you know, is a concern for the zoning board. Did you at least have any models or have a dB rating or something that you could represent at all when requesting this variance so we can address the issue of the environment?
I don't have that information this evening, but I could get, like, you know, I could obtain that.
Would you, Jonathan, would you have concern or in approving this application without that information? Or do you think we should have some provision in?
I, I would like to see something that was less than a 68 dB rating, which I think is typical for most of the new common units that have a lower dB rating. You know, it's typically what we would look at, which is, you know, ambient noise.
Right. Would you be open to granting the variance if we submitted that information, at least that dB rating?
Let me just, I want to just pull up a chart. I want to make sure I'm not.
I'm looking right now. There's a chart that has 60 is, seems to be, 60 seems to be your average for air conditioner.
Yeah, that's, but that was from memory.
Very good.
You know, so I, I would be willing to, you know, approve conditionally on that each of the air conditioning units would have to be 60 dB or less. I should say compressor.
Okay.
Because these are going to be tied into, what, a central system, into splits? What are you, what's?
System, one for the first floor and one for the second floor.
But it'll be a central, separate air handling?
Yes, yes, yeah, central system.
Okay.
It's not head units on the wall. It's going to be an actual ducted unit.
Correct.
The, the other thing that's odd about this location is the way the other, the adjacent properties to the left of the house as you're facing it. It's almost like a pie in a sense. It's not, these aren't rectangular lots that are near it. So, it's, it's, they wouldn't be adjacent to someone's bedroom window from what I could see. Is that correct?
That's correct. And if I pull up the, let me see if I can blow this up.
Yeah.
Right here, this is the house right here. These condensing units are actually adjacent to this rear yard on Rockingstone.
But I have no issue with specifying a maximum dB on the units.
Okay. Whose mother is it that lives in the house?
Pardon?
They're saying it, whose mother lives in the house?
Oh, it's when their parents are visiting.
No, because a couple of months ago I was there. She was having a problem with her fire alarm. She's a nice lady. We helped to silence the alarm.
So, I think Sarah and Tim are on tonight.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you're there.
Yeah, um, no, my, it wouldn't have been my, recently?
Uh, yeah, it was a couple of months ago. The, we had a false alarm at the house we responded to.
No, I don't think it was this house. My mother-in-law lives in the Marneck. Maybe you went over there.
Pretty sure, okay.
Yeah, but it has been tough. My, my husband and I both grew up in Larchmont and Marneck. And we've had the house 19 years, and it's hard for our parents to come without the bathroom on the first floor.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
All right. Any other questions from other board members? All right, Rich, is there anything in the, anyone in the audience?
No, I'm not seeing any emails or anybody raising their hands.
All right. All right. Do we, do we close this first before the motion? Okay, make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
Okay, does, if so much stuff, does anyone want to do this? I can do it or someone else?
I could give it a try.
Okay, fine. Good, thank you.
Okay, so, this is the Dillon property at 11 Spruce Road in Larchmont. The application is for an addition and air conditioning unit, units really. It says unit, but it's two units. On the premises located 11 Spruce Road, block one, section one, block 15, parcel 334. The addition in the side yard is proposed will be 5.9 feet where 10 feet is permitted pursuant to section 240-38B2A. The air conditioning unit will have a side yard setback of 8.6 where 10 feet is required pursuant to section 240-38B2A. And further, the addition increases the extent by which the building is non-conforming. So, the board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors. Whether there would be an undesirable change, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created. No, we don't think it'll be an undesirable change in the neighborhood. The, the addition, the materials of the addition match the existing house. And the addition is, doesn't increase the non-conformity that's already in place. And the, the addition, the new kitchen would be put under the second-floor bedroom, thereby minimizing the lot coverage. And it is consistent with the neighborhood. Whether an applicant can achieve their goals via reasonable alternative, which does not involve the necessity of an area variance. This is a reasonable, this is the reasonable way to go, particularly because it's being put in right under an existing second-floor bedroom. And the, in terms of the air conditioning, the HVAC unit is going to be in the back of the house where nobody will see it. And I don't know if this is the time when I should speak to the, the conditional approval. But we are approving the HVAC unit conditionally on the ground that it be less than 60, have less than a 60 dB rating for the condensers. This is the central air system that they're putting in. And we have that condition because we want to make sure that the sound is not loud for the community. And that would be a reasonable addition in terms of that unit. Again, it's already a non-conforming lot, and this appears to be the best place, given the irregular shape of the lot. Whether the variance is substantial, no, they tried to minimize the bulk again by putting the, the, the kitchen and the bathroom. Well, the kitchen is underneath the second-floor bedroom, and then a small extension of the bathroom. And the variance is just a few feet and relatively minimal. Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Again, no, it seems to be a minimal addition in a good place. And it's already non-conforming. It doesn't expand the non-conformity. And whether there has been a self-created difficulty, yes, but that is not determinative.
I think it does. Richie, I think this does expand the non-conformity. Because just by definition, anything that's non-conforming that involves an expansion expands the non-conformity. But it sounds like what you're saying is that it doesn't, it, the impact doesn't.
All right. Is it minimally, is it a minimal expansion of the non-conformity?
Yeah, you can.
Is that a good way to phrase it?
The vertical increases the non-conformity, that the portions that are actually being added to the house, except for the air conditioning unit, are all with, as of right. It's only the air conditioning units that you're dealing with, so it's minimal in how.
I believe it's only one of the units, it's not both. I think only one, the back one is the only one that really has the problem. The front one's within 10 feet.
Okay, and the, and the addition itself is within the set, within the required setbacks?
No.
No, because the house is already non-conforming.
Yeah, the house is not, this is, on the right, on the right side, the house has only got 5.9 feet.
Right. It's, it's within the existing, it does not increase the existing encroachment.
Right.
Correct.
And I'd like to add, in terms of the reasonable alternative, there, the, the need here is that because of elderly parents and the fact that there's no bathroom on the first floor. The need, there is a need, a real need for a bathroom in this plan. For a bathroom on the first floor.
Okay. Anything else, or should motion to approve, motion to close the hearing, rather?
Will we close? But I can, I can second, I'll second the motion. Yes.
Anyone opposed?
Anyone opposed?
No. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Application number three, case number 3222, David Sutchman, Three Country Lane. Requesting an outdoor hot tub on the premises located at Three Country Lane and known on the tax assessment map as block 320, lot 56.
And this application duly noticed?
Yes, it was.
Jonathan, you said you saw a sign there today?
I was there today and yesterday.
Where was the sign?
Right in the front yard.
All right, maybe I was looking along the road and didn't see anything.
Set Three Country Road instead of Three Country Lane?
Yeah.
Oh.
Three Country Lane. Hi, David Sutchman and Jennifer Mitchell. Thank you.
All right, so we make the motion to open the public hearing?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, um, is, is, who is representing? Is the homeowner on?
We are the, we are the homeowners, David Sutchman and Jennifer Mitchell. How are you all tonight?
Good. Why don't you go ahead and explain your request?
Sure. First of all. Sure. First of all, thank you so much for your consideration. We are, we've submitted a variance request because we would like to put in a hot tub in the back of our yard, which is my wife's dream to have. It is, the slab itself is seven by nine, the hot tub itself is seven by seven. The setback in the rear of the property is twenty-five feet. And based on the placement, we put it as close to the house as we possibly could without it being right up against the house. Is seventeen point nine would leave the amount of space that would be left. So we have to come before you all to request a variance. The rear of the property, as you can see in the photos in your packets, I apologize, I don't have the electronic version to show you, but the, the photos are in the packets. It's a pretty densely wooded area, I think, at least for our area, certainly in our community, it's pretty dense. It is placed, I think, in an area that the rights, the house on the right side cannot even see the hot tub or the area. The house on the left is wooded between the two properties and I think difficult, so the effect on the two neighbors to the sides is very minimal and there is no home behind us. It's open property and woods, so there's no home in the rear as well. So the effect, I believe, on the community and the neighborhood is pretty limited. And I think that summarizes the request.
All right. I don't have any questions. Is any questions from the board?
What kind of noise are we talking about? A lot of noise?
It's very minimal.
Only if they yell while they're in it. All right, anything else on the board or should we open it?
I've had the opportunity to view the site. For any, anyone else's, just ratification purposes, there is a large buffer behind Country Lane and Country Road that runs all the way down to ninety-five. It actually is land that is potentially developable, but the way that this property is set, it's, it's actually maybe eighteen feet below the top of the ridge that's there and then it runs downhill all the way from there, so there won't be any effect that way. Their backyard is kind of a bowl, the way it's set up with a very large retaining wall that's there. There's also an existing deck that already protrudes, you know, beyond the distance of this. So to me, it seems like it fits logically, you know, into that space. I can't imagine who it would affect. You know, already there's an entertaining area out there. And unless they're planning on, I don't even want to say what could go on the hot tub. There's already, there's already a use in the backyard that would have, you know, noise from the normal occupancy that's there, so I can't imagine any detriment.
Right, anyone else or should we just open it to the, no, no one raising their hand, Rich?
I know, I accidentally changed Abby to attendee, I gotta bring her back.
All right, motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All right, I can do it if no one else wants to do it, well.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, a real tough one.
I was gonna try it for my first one, but.
Yeah.
A good idea.
It's a good one.
All right, this is, this is case number three, two, 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 case, application of David Sutchman at Three Country Lane for a hot tub in the backyard. Where he needs a variance for a setback, a variance of setback because, because of where the hot tub will be situated. He'll go into, the setback will be seventeen point nine feet where twenty-five feet is required. And considering the application, we have to balance the benefit to the applicant with any detriment to the community. We look at whether there's an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. We find that won't be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and no detriment. The proposed hot tub, which has a very minimal footprint of a slab of seven by nine and the tub itself is seven by seven. In addition, the hot tub will barely be able to be seen by the side neighbors. And there is no neighbor in the rear. In addition, there's a stone retaining wall, so it won't be, it won't, nobody will see it from the back either. Whether the applicant can achieve their goals via reasonable alternative, which does not involve the necessity of a variance. The applicants are putting the hot tub as close as possible to the side of the house without being sort of in it. And there doesn't seem to be, they, they moved it out from the house a minimal amount and they will still have a substantial amount of distance between the tub and the property line. Whether the variance is substantial, we find the variance is minimal. Because the, there's only a, it's, it's basically an eight foot change to the setback and no neighbors are going to be affected by this at all. Whether it will have an adverse impact on physical or the environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. We find it will not for the reasons stated, we've already stated, there will be no impact on the neighbors. The applicants have represented the noise will be minimal. In addition, there's already, that the area is already used for recreation, entertaining outdoors, so there should not be any kind of increase in the amount of noise. And whether there has been a self-created difficulty, yes, to the extent that they're putting in a hot tub because they want a hot tub, but in this case, we do not find that to be determinative.
Right.
Anything I left out?
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, motion to close public hearing?
Already closed.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, close everything. Should we, Francine, you want to take the vote?
A second on the motion.
Okay.
Everybody in favor?
Yes.
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 Anyone opposed, just for the record? Nobody opposed?
Thank you all, we're so excited.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
The zoning board comes over the first week after you put it in.
No problem. We're good sharers. Bye. Thank you, have a good evening.
Number four, case number three, two, two, three, Mary Stone, twenty-six Bonnie Way. Requesting a first floor addition and steps on the premises located at twenty-six Bonnie Way and known on the tax assessment map as block one oh four. Lot five, two point two.
Can the applicant raise her hand? I don't see the name that I'm looking for. Yeah, I guess Mary Stone.
Hello?
You're representing Mary Stone at twenty-six.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. My name is Shane. I work with New Dimensions Remodeling, presenting twenty-six Bonnie Way. Unfortunately, I don't have a digital presentation. I would request the board refer to my drawings. I've submitted eleven by seventeen drawings for the meeting. We are adding a addition. Yes.
Oh, a motion to open the public hearing. Thank you, Francine.
Thank you. Okay, now you can continue.
Thank you. We're adding an addition to the front right corner of the house. The house is existing non-conforming. We're staying within the exterior perimeter of the house. In other words, we're squaring off the house. We're removing, removing this existing stairs that has no function for the daily life of the household, house owners. And we're extending the dining room, reconfiguring the kitchen and the eating area. The kitchen, like, the new design is located in the center of the house, is more accessible from the entrance, while in the old design was in the rear right corner. This is a better layout. And we're staying with the details of the existing housing facade. We're enhancing the curb side appeal. And architecturally we're gaining, and functionally we're gaining, I believe. And it will enhance the house in many ways.
What is the interior dimension of the existing dining room? I see that you're expanding it to sixteen point three feet. In my mind, it looks like you must have something with that bump out that's there that limits it down to maybe a total of fifteen feet that's there?
I don't have.
Sorry, even less than that, probably you're losing three feet. It might be only about twelve to thirteen feet in that dining.
It's a four foot, eleven inch addition. If you look on the front of page two. New additions, four foot, eleven and a half.
I see it now. You're right, so you, you have only less than twelve feet for a dining room in a formal center hall colonial, huh? Okay. The other thing that you might want to bring to the attention of the board, which I noticed when I viewed this site, this house is also burdened by a very large right of way in the front, so you still have probably thirty feet to the curb or close to it. Which you can see on the, on the front site plan. And to me, when I looked at the sight line, you know, down, you know, there, there's really no issue. This is staying within the existing, you're closing off a, what right now is steps and a door, you know, so it really is just squaring out the house. If anything, it probably improves the curb appeal.
And the steps has no function for the house owners at the moment. They don't use those steps.
Yeah. All right, any other comments or questions from the board? I'll take that as a no. Rich, is there anyone in the audience?
Nobody raising their hand. Let me just check the one last email.
All right. Make a motion to close the public hearing. Anyone want to?
No, there is no, there is nobody on the email.
All right.
I can, I can second closing the public hearing.
Thank you. All right, I can do this one if we'll take turns. Okay. All right. Application number four, case number three, two, two, three, Mary Stone, twenty-six Bonnie Way. The applicant is requesting a, an addition in the front yard, which will be thirty point three feet where forty is required. And the combined side yard setbacks will be twenty-eight where thirty feet is required. The board finds that they benefit to the applicant from the granting of the variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors. As to whether the application will variance will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The squaring off, removal of these front, of these steps on the right front side of the house and squaring off will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. It in fact will more enhance the front of the house and make it more symmetrical than it is currently. Whether the applicants can achieve their goals via a reasonable alternative, the board finds that no, the applicants cannot achieve their goals via a reasonable alternative. You're really, the footprint of the house is not changing. The only thing that's happening is filling in, filling in the, the stairs, which will also help the applicants achieve a goal of improving the dining room, the formal dining room, which is a bit undersized for the house. And is also a, you know, a, an access to the house that is not even used. Whether the variance requested is substantial, it is, the board finds it is not substantial. It is the minimum amount needed to achieve what the applicant wishes, expanding the dining room and closing off the stairs. So the board finds it's really not a substantial request. As to whether it will have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. It will, the board finds it will not. There will be no change in impervious surface. There should be no change in runoff, no change in light. So, or any other undesirable, undesirable results. As to whether the difficulty was self-created, the board finds it is self-created, but this is not determinative in this matter.
Irene, for the, the substantiality, would you say that the, that the large right of way from the street may?
Yes, that's, yes, 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 I've left that out. Yes, given that there's a large right of way, the house is set back farther, visually farther from the street than it would, the application would suggest, so we also are, based on that as well, would not consider this to be a substantial request.
Was there, was there a second?
Second.
Francine?
Got it, Robin. Vote, please.
Yes.
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 All, all said yes.
Okay, nobody opposed.
You know, it, it's reversed, so.
Thank you, Richard.
Application number five, case number three, two, two, four, Ben and Kim Benzant and Carleone Avenue, requesting an addition on the premises located at one-ten Carleone Avenue and known on the tax assessment map as four, zero, four, lot one eighty-eight.
All right. Is the applicant here?
We are. Good evening, guys.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion to open public hearing?
Second.
Great. All right, who is speaking for the applicant?
Gregory Lewis, lesser half of Lewis and Lewis Architects. We've got Ben and Kim Benzant, if you guys want to wave. I think Ben got a haircut there. I just must have gotten his vaccine or something. I, I still haven't gotten my haircut.
It was getting bad, something had to be done.
I was gonna say, so I break on the last application, but I didn't slide.
You know, is this gonna be our last Zoom? Because, you know, I was gonna stand up and show I have pants on, just, I was gonna make everyone stand up.
I'm not standing up.
All right, here we go. So I'm gonna share a screen. And let me minimize this. Do you see my cover sheet?
Yes.
Great, let me just pull this one over here, sorry. Okay, so we're at one-ten Carleone. And Ben and Kim came to ask me for a kitchen renovation. And like most clients, they said, well, you know, we really need a master bathroom and we need a closet. And we like to do a huge patio and a deck and all this. And then we've gone through some value engineering, but we, we're still asking for a master bathroom addition that is in the left side yard setback. And their house is located on Carleone, let me just zoom in here for a second. And Ben is another IT guy that's gonna give me a hard time for my poor Zoom skills here. And so we're about mid-block in Carleone here. I'm not sure if you guys were able to go by or not. The lot is quite huge and the house is very beautiful on the site. It's It's a Tudor and has a large two-story section here, one-story section with a large living room. And then the back is on the right here, double gable, and then that living room on the left. This area is actually where we're proposing the addition. It had an addition at one point for this mudroom, which a previous architect had designed this octagon into the structure, which you'll see later with my presentation, what we're proposing to do upstairs with it. This is the other side of the house. And these are some neighborhood shots. As you all know, Carleone's a gorgeous street with some beautiful houses from the 20s and 30s on it. I'm just gonna show you a quick site map. So again, we're mid-block, basically at the end of Meadow as you come down here. This is the existing house here. And then the adjacent properties and there's some quite substantial houses on this block from a planning standpoint. I'm gonna jump to the site plan so you get a sense of the proposed work. The proposed second floor addition is a one-story addition over a single-story section of the house. And it's this hatch area that you see here. The variance is actually for this little section here where they'd say 10-foot side yard setback required. The existing house is at 8.3. And we're asking for 7.6 for the overhang of our proposed addition. The we've actually scaled the project back. We're not gonna be doing this section, but we're still here for the variance for the master bathroom on this side. And this is purely, again, one of those architecture things. We studied a flat facade and then we studied doing it with an overhang. And Ben is a wannabe architect and he was convinced that the overhang is what we needed to do. And I explained we'd have to go through this really arduous process with a very nasty board. And they may not approve it. And he said, let's do it. I think I think it's a better design, so let's go for that. And I hope you know I'm kidding. Maybe it's a Zoom, I shouldn't kid as much. So here's the proposed first floor plan. It's all within the existing footprint. What we're actually talking about is right over here where the overhang, a six-inch overhang is proposed. And I'll get to that on the second floor here. So we have the existing bathroom closet. This closet's actually gone away in our value engineering, but we're keeping the octagon and we're extending over here. But again, the it's really more on the elevation, which I get to, here's the roof plan. And then lighting. And then the architecture. Let me just get to this. So this is actually what we're talking about. If you want to zoom in here, I guess I can zoom in here. The existing one-story section, the master bedrooms here, closet, closet, and then master bathroom. And we studied it with different options. We just didn't like putting a flat two-story facade on this. We had an overhang here, have deep overhangs here. So we wanted to create the board and baton, the stucco, and then return that. And then you'll see, this is the old pantry that's existing in the house. And we're just asking for the variance to extend over in this area. We're carrying that six-inch overhang around the whole facade here. So here you see it on the left side. Here you see it on the bathroom side. Again, this is the existing mudroom pantry area. And then this is the proposed addition. We're gonna match the the dark brown color. The windows are gonna be the same color as the existing house windows. The roof shingles will be new. We're looking at a black roof shingle for the entire house. And then let me see the most shot here. This is the back elevation. And again, you see, this is in the beyond, but this is the six inches. So this is the variance we're asking for here. And then the other side really does, you don't see that at all. So that's the extent of our proposal. We also reached out to the neighbor directly to the left. And maybe Ben, could you comment on your conversation with him?
Sure. So and actually not just to the left. So we got everybody kind of within line of sight. Had some informal conversations with them, let them know what we were doing. And everybody has has at least given us their their sort of informal blessing on it. Said good luck and and I'm sorry to hear about lumber prices.
They're only up 300%. Don't worry.
That's right. And Jonathan, I don't know if you wanted to bring up the the point about before, but yes, the the and and as you were looking at the rear elevation, that whole new, the the roof is all new up there. Hopefully not.
I was gonna do an ortho explorer on Greg because there was no crosshatching for the rear elevation for the roof, so.
Oh, that's.
I couldn't figure out how the octagon went. And are you gonna carry the corbels?
The corbels, they're really mostly on this section of the house, but we could study that.
It was just for consistency, so I'm playing Martha Architectural Review.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
I mean, it just, you also had a, it did confuse me because your second floor electrical is marked as first floor plan, so.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I guess the only thing that seemed odd to me was the way that the windows are wrapping around from a master, you know, facing the other house that's there. But, you know, I did know when I walked the property, it's very well screened between the two. You have very mature growth that's there. And it's not an occupied area on the second floor. So you don't have to worry about waving at your neighbors from your tub.
Right.
From the tub, so.
Yep.
And I also was surprised, what was that rear chimney? What was the function of it originally?
So we have, the reason that we were looking to demo that is that we have two fireplaces in the house. And so in the back, we use that back room as a family room. And so just having a big sliding glass door to be able to go in and out, kind of do that indoor-outdoor thing is is just more functional for us. And then when we do want to have a fire, we've got a really big, nice one in the living room that we're not touching because it's beautiful and old and original and so forth.
So it's probably a good change because it actually creates a little more balance. It was kind of offset to me the way.
I think we're talking about the back elevation.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, there's a huge, there's a huge fireplace here, which really cuts off the view of the backyard. It's a spectacular property and the fireplace takes up just a half of the backyard.
It also threw off the rear symmetry, so.
Exactly.
Agreed.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Take that as no. Any comments or questions from the audience? Rich?
No, no comments or questions.
Okay. I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Okay, anyone want to tackle this one?
I can. Okay. Why is there no file number on my thing here?
Yeah, it's.
Three, two, two, four. This is Ben and Kim Vinzant at 110 Carleone Avenue. They are seeking a variance for an addition that they're doing on the house. The addition, as proposed, will have a side yard of 7.6 feet where 10 feet is permitted. The combined side yard setbacks proposed are 16.2 feet where 30 feet is required, which will further increase because of the vertical extension, the extent to which the building is non-conforming. The board, in looking at its this application, took into account the balancing of the benefit to the applicant versus the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the community. In doing so, it considered whether an undesirable change in the neighborhood character, whether there would be an undesirable change in the character of nearby properties. The board finds that there won't be. The additions that are being suggested onto the house are actually consistent with the neighborhood. They're consistent with the Tudor style, consistent with the balance of the houses, both in size and in mass. The addition is vertical within the same footprint, although there is an additional request for the variance for an overhang, which is an architectural element that balances out the balance of the overhang that is already existing on the home. So from a character standpoint, it will remain consistent. The applicant did note that they had to discuss this with the neighbors and all were favorable. It was properly noticed, the information was available to neighbors and nobody commented to the negative. Whether the benefit could be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. They want to add a master bath on the second floor and rework the kitchen area. This seems like a reasonable and least amount of variance that would be required to meet that need. Whether or not there will be any adverse effects on the physical or any environmental effects, the board finds it won't, since this is remaining within the existing footprint and won't have the effect on light, on air or on runoff. Whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, it is clearly self-created because the applicants would like to have a addition of a master bath and rework their first floor plan, but it is non-determining in this matter.
And I missed the one on substantiality.
No, I think I missed the one on substantiality. The board finds that this request is not substantial. The amount of the intrusion into the setback is minimal. Most of the request is actually related to an architectural feature. But of course, that architectural feature starts inside the setback. It has to be considered as part of the variance. And once again, it was an existing non-conforming property and this is a vertical expansion. So it really doesn't affect overall the bulk and it's minimal to the extent that it increases the non-conformity. So it is not substantial.
Thank you.
Respectfully, Susan.
Second, someone?
Second.
Vote.
Hi.
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 Bye.
Vote, go in favor.
Enjoy. Good luck with your costing.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for volunteering.
Appreciate it.
Application number six, case number two.
Paige is coming, you're leaving, right?
Case number two, 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 five, Maureen and Jeff Winner, 206 Mulberry Lane. Requesting a second floor addition on the premises located at 206 Mulberry Lane and known on the tax assessment map as block two, one, three, lot 505.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Right. Rich, do we have a? Is it Greg again or is Paige?
It's Paige.
Yeah.
We have an audio problem here.
Yeah, tell Greg to shut his off.
I know. He's supposed to exit. All right, thank you. Now the real work can begin. So good evening. Paige Lewis, Lewis and Lewis Architects, here this evening with Maureen and Jeff Winner. Hi, guys.
Hello.
We're here tonight to talk about a second floor addition on their existing house. And I'll share my screen and walk you guys through the process.
How could the architects not have designed a better setup for themselves? It's the shoemaker's sun goes without.
That's right. That's right. So I, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Site plan. So on the left side of the screen is the existing house and the really on the right side is the proposed site plan. But as you can see from both, here's the, this is Mulberry. And this is their existing house within in an R15 district, which happens to have a front yard setback of 40 feet. So the existing house, we clip a little bit of the corner here above the garage. And then just this little wedge along the side. So I'll total it about a 20 square foot that's beyond the setbacks. So what we're proposing to do is, this is the existing first floor plan and the existing second floor. They have a partial front dormer on the second floor. And they have a study bedroom up there, a bathroom and a large playroom. And we're gonna come in and I'll show you the existing, I mean, the proposed, and add a full three bedrooms and a master suite on the second floor. Downstairs, we're gonna renovate the kitchen and and create a mudroom out of one of the bedrooms.
This one for me?
So then.
Okay, I've got my.
Hold on one second here.
We got triple Zooms going on here. My apologies. How's everyone?
Well, we got a double Zoom. Hold on one second. Sorry about that. We have a double Zoom night. Greg also has a project at the Architectural Review Board in the Village, so. Anyways, so getting back to the winners. So we are proposing then on the elevations, you'll see the existing front elevation and the proposed second, proposed front elevation. Now adding the second floor onto the first. And then as you move around to the sides, the the impact from the with the second floor addition. And then the rear.
You stopped sharing your screen.
Yeah, we don't see your screen.
You can't see it. I can't understand why because I wasn't thinking here.
Your existing rear elevation is not labeled correctly. So, oh, you got it.
So do you see, so the top of the screen is the existing rear and the bottom is the proposed rear.
Yeah.
I'll go back to the front because it's. So then, you know, here's the garage doors, fresh doors stay the same. The windows on the first floor were really, these rooms are staying. So we're just adding a new second floor. New existing front door, living room windows, the master bedroom windows in the it's really new above here. Screen porch stays. We're not really, we're kind of leaving this side of the house alone. And with that, Maureen and Jeff, is there anything you wanted to add?
Um, no, I don't think anything to add. We've talked to our neighbors and I believe that they, three of them submitted letters that they've seen the plans and that they're in support and they're excited for it. And yeah, thank you for your consideration and thank you Paige for all your your hard work.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna go back to the site plan because it being in an R15 with the 40-foot front yard and then, you know, this is their stone wall. So the street line is down here. So again, we're kind of, it seems to be the theme tonight, to be burdened with the a large right of way as well as a deep front yard setback. So I'm gonna turn it back over to the board for any questions.
All right. Any questions from anyone?
I don't know how many board members got to view this, but you know, Mulberry is a hill from one side in three directions, the way it slopes up. They're actually, you know, above on the hill and the house immediately to the left. I don't know if you know the answer, Paige, but it looked visually like the roof line, the top of the ridge of the blue house adjacent, will still be above the top of the ridge line of this house. And then the house to the right is kind of, I guess, at a similar grade. So you know, there's there's a consistency that's there. You can, you can definitely see from that lower picture there how that house actually, right now, really towers above this house. So if anything, it'll create more consistency in the neighborhood. And the where you see that wall on the right side of the pictures you're showing, that's the property line. There's another 20 feet to the street. So I don't think we really have much of an issue of the front yard setback, clearly from the property line. But I don't think anyone has to worry about developing that right of way. You know, there should really be a concern that's there.
All right. Anyone else on the board have any comments, questions? All right, Rich, anyone in the audience?
And I think it should be noted there, have we entered into the record? Because I at least had the opportunity to see three letters that came in from Deborah Edibitsky at, she lives at 208.
Yes, that's the blue house that you just showed.
At 208, we had a email that came in from Tom and Sadie Connor at 206. And we had an email from Carol Sears.
Carol is the house to the right.
Right. So if you're looking at the house, it's the house on the right.
She's one high ridge.
Right.
One, that's right.
Right. And the other one was, I'm sorry, was one nine. And the other one was, I'm sorry, was 195 Mulberry that was there. And we didn't have any letters, I guess, Francine, of anyone who, you know, to the detriment.
Yeah, they were notably supportive letters. And they were actually happy for you to be...
I mean, although the board still takes into account, you know, that there could be future neighbors that are potentially there, and we have to be considerate of what someone comes in. It's definitely helpful that the neighbors are supporting this. You know, it doesn't look like there's much of an effect.
Agreed. Agreed. Rich, you said there were no comments?
No comments.
Okay, other than the letters? All right, good. Close the public hearing?
Second.
And Paige, I didn't have anything to beat you up on, like I beat Greg up on some of his stuff.
That's all right.
All right.
I can try this one.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so application by Maureen and Jeff Winter, 206 Mulberry Lane, Marchmont for a second floor addition. The proposed addition in the front yard is 39 feet, where 40 feet is required, and a side yard of 9.1 feet, where 10 feet is required. And the combined side yards are 23.4, where 30 feet is required. And further, the addition increases the extent by which the building is non-conforming. The board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors. One, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created. No, actually, we've got three letters from three neighbors who were very supportive of this and felt that the change would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood and no detriment to their properties. And we agree that it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. Two, whether an applicant can achieve their goals via a reasonable alternative, which does not involve the necessity of an area variance. We find that this does achieve their goals in a reasonable way. And most notably, also, we discussed the fact that there's a very large right-of-way, and it's about 20 feet to the street. Also, the house to the right and the left will still be way above this house. And if anything, this will create more consistency in the neighborhood and is a reasonable addition. Whether the variance is substantial? No, it is not. It's relatively minimal. Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? No, as we discussed, it's minimal. No adverse environmental impact has been discussed. And if anything, it appears that it will be a positive addition to the neighborhood. Whether there has been a self-created difficulty? Yes, because they want to make an addition on their home, but that is not determinative in this case.
Robin, for substantiality and adverse environmental impact, I need a little bit more, you know, to, so that it's not conclusory as far as, you know, not just that it's not, that it's minimal, but it's minimal because...
Okay. Well, it's minimal in that the the extent of the variance is minimal in terms of the variance itself and how much it...
Or how about that the footprint of the house will not change?
Footprint of the house will not change is basically expanding the dormer, as I understand it. And therefore, it's minimal because it does not extend beyond the existing footprint.
That's good. And I can use that for both. Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve?
I can second and approve.
Both? Okay, Jonathan? Irene?
Yes.
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 Okay, we got it. All right.
Enjoy your edition.
Thank you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Application number seven, case number 3226, Lindsay Cohen, 107 North Chatsworth Avenue. Legalizing an air conditioning condensing unit on a premises located at 107 North Chatsworth and known on the tax assessment map as block 114, lot 466.
Oh, excuse me. Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All right. Let's see. Rich, who is representing? Are the owners representing themselves?
Looks that way.
Why isn't it working?
We see you.
Oh, you see me? I don't see myself, that's why. Hi. Yeah, so should I share my screen like everyone else has?
Let us know who you are.
Introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Cohen. I live at 107 North Chatsworth Avenue, and I'm looking to add central air to my home.
One question, Francine, is the notice of disapproval says to legalize, but there's nothing there, so...
I'm not sure what you mean by that, if I need to answer.
No, no, it's not you. I really enjoyed that. It has to do with how the...
I think my understanding was, I don't, yeah, that's a good question. So I didn't ask for a survey.
All right.
I apologize, that was an oversight.
That's okay. That's okay. I knew there wasn't anything there, so it didn't make sense. Go ahead with your presentation, please.
So this is my house on the corner of North Chatsworth Avenue and Fern. And I'm looking to put air conditioning condensers, I guess, on the Fern roadside, and need a few extra feet for them to be within the setback. So I need a variance. I'm trying to get to the picture. Oh, so this is the area where I want to put the air conditioners, the condensers on the exterior tucked in between the driveway and the sunroom. There they are, shown here.
And are you certain of the placement? Just because you don't want them to be farther within, into the setback? You want to make sure that what you're asking for is exactly what you'll need?
Meaning if they would have to shift closer to Fern Road?
No, 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 no. If you were to intrude more towards Fern Road, you would, you just want to make sure that 25 feet and 28 feet are, you don't need any more of a variance than that.
Right. So I know the air conditioning installers, I think, met with Mr. Polkari to understand what they would need, and this is what they came up with.
Okay.
And then I have the cut sheets of the units below this, where I heard you mention about decimals and other people's requests for variance. So I saw that, I think mine is under what you were asking for. 50, 53, 55.
Will this be used for cooling and heating, or just, I assume, just cooling?
Just cooling.
Larger unit, 57 D B.
Oh, is this, this is a smaller one, and then there's another one.
I had this...
Sorry, I have the whole...
56, 57 D B.
I think there's, here's the larger one.
That's the air handler.
Oh, the inside?
There you go. That's it. That's, that's your compressor.
57.
Yeah. Is there anything else? Can I actually tell you guys? Oh, here are my factors.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I think it's important to note, when you look at the site plan here, this is a house that's on a corner lot again. You know, and you're dealing with Fern Road, which is why there's a large distance to the next house that's out there. If you put it on any other area of the house, you'd end up with it being closer to another structure. So this would seem to be the least intrusive. And a 57 D B is less than our volume talking, so really shouldn't have any effects.
Yes. All right. Rich, anyone in the audience?
I'm sick.
Any emails or attendees?
You can unshare your screen.
On me, okay.
No, nobody in the audience or emails.
All right. Are your neighbors aware of what you're proposing to do?
Yes, they are.
Okay. I assume they're more supportive.
Very, yeah.
Great. All right. Anything else? Or shall we move to close public hearing? Second, somebody?
Second.
Thank you. I can do this one. All right. This is file number 3226, or application number seven, file three, case number 3226, Lindsay Cohen, 107 North Chatsworth. Applicant is proposing to install a condensing unit in the front yard at 25 feet, where 30 feet is required. And at... Now, do we approve both? I mean, there's, 25 is obviously the one that intrudes the most. And then there's a second one that's 28, which would less of a variance, but they both require variances, correct?
Two separate units.
Fine. And a second unit, which is placed in the front, at 28 feet in the front yard, where 30 feet is required. All right. So the board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors. As to whether the proposed variance will produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The board finds that the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. The homeowner is burdened by two front yards, given that the house is on a corner. They're placing the units in the side yard. In addition, there's quite a distance between these air conditioning units and any adjoining neighbor, especially the one across the street. As to whether the applicants can achieve their goals via a reasonable alternative, the board finds that the applicants really have no reasonable alternative, given their desire for air conditioning, and that there is really nowhere else on the property to place these units that would be less intrusive into the neighborhood. As to whether the variance requested is substantial, the board finds it's really not substantial, given that they, the two units still are 25 and 30 feet from the lot line in what is effectively a side yard. Although, again, the homeowner is burdened by two front yards because of the place, because of the fact it's on a corner. As to whether the variance will have adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, the board finds it will not. The D B ratings on both units are quite low, below 60. They will also be a good distance from any of the neighbors, especially the one directly opposite. And runoff and noise is really the primary consideration. Runoff and weight really don't matter here. As to whether the difficulty was self-created, the board finds that the difficulty is self-created, but not determinative in this matter. Let's see. Okay. So do I make a motion to approve next?
No, you just asked for a sec. You made the motion, and who?
Jonathan said yes.
Okay.
Both, Carol?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Enjoy.
Thanks. Bye.
Application number eight, case number 3227, Brandon 20 Bunny Way, requesting a one-story addition in front steps on the premises, like 20 Bunny Way, and known on the tax assessment map as block 104, lot 68.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Thank you, Carol.
All right. Let's see. I think Paige is on this one again. Do you want to proceed with describing the project, please?
Yes. Good evening. Paige Lewis, once again, representing Brandon and Erica Setcliffe at 20 Bunny Way. We are proposing a front portico at their front door. And once again, we have another R-15 with the 40-foot front yard setback. And when they're existing, it's already, the house itself is like 30-something. I'll show you in a second. So we're already, the existing house is already beyond the front yard setback. So the portico will be further into the setback than the base of the front of the house. And we also have a deck at the rear of the house that lies in conflict with the side yard setback. So I'll share my screen. And I switched, so I'm not in conflict with Greg anymore. Except that's not the right one. Hold on. All right. Are you seeing my screen?
No.
No? Okay. Let me finish the share. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. So the house is at 20 Bunny Way. And let me go to the site plan. Oh, well, we'll zoom in. So the... So here's our 40-foot front yard setback, which kind of lies through the middle of the living room. And here's our stoop at the front door. And so we're going to be adding a covered portico over the stoop. And so therefore, we will be coming out towards the street, much closer than we are now. And so that's at the front. And then at the back of the house, we're doing a deck, and we're lining up off the back of the garage. And so it's 7.8 at this corner, but the existing garage is 7.4. So that, that's the plan. I'll walk you through the drawings. The existing first floor plan, there's the stoop, the existing deck. And then demo. So let me zoom in. So we'll be coming in, we'll have two columns. The stoop gets a little wider and comes... The stoop gets a little wider and comes out a little closer to the street. We're also going to be taking off the brick facade and putting siding up so it's more consistent with the rest of the house. And then back, there's our deck and we're just lining up with the garage. Rear face of the garage, side of wall of the garage. And then I'll jump to the elevations. So the proposed, proposes at the top of the page, the existing's at the bottom. So you can see how here's the front door, we're just going to add two columns and a little gable roof over the front door. And then at the back, so the existing deck and steps come down here and we're going to grab the pieces behind the garage and then turn the steps and come down into the yard. And then
Ask a question?
Sure.
You're up to the 78 feet from the side yard?
Let me go back to the site plan.
Look at you were stepping in a little bit on that, from the back, back, from the back of the garage. It's my, my plan.
So because of the way the lot line is, so the garage is 74. I mean, we can, if we, if that
That's just what's, it's what's on your zoning table, so that's why I was assuming that
78. Okay.
What was that, Richie?
I thought the deck was stepping in from the edge of the house, four inches to 78. And because our zoning chart said 78 also, and on that picture, it looks like that line is set back a tiny bit.
Yeah, because if it extends out, the closest point's going to be the same 7.4 at the corner of the house.
Correct.
Yeah, well, it kind of lays out a little bit.
Yeah, I know, but still the closest point is 74.
So correct, because the closest point is still 74, but back here it might open up. But it's at this point, it's 7, the existing 7.4, so.
But does it line up with the back of, with the garage? Or is it set in four inches from the back of the garage?
We were lining it up with the side wall of the garage. But if it's a problem, I'll push it in four inches to
Because it would start at 74 there, not 78.
Right, because the maximum would be the 7.4.
Exactly.
It's shown on a plan, so any neighbor that wanted to look at it could have
Right, I mean, Lisa, she could, we could just amend here, right? Shouldn't have to be re-noted because the exact dimension wasn't there, it's still for the same purpose.
Yeah, the notices don't specify the dimension.
Right, so we may want, I think you might want to request to amend your application to 7.4.
Or leave, leave it at 7.8 and pull it in four inches and get approval?
That's your call.
Yeah.
Well, when you say amend, Paige, I don't think you have to come back next month.
No, we're saying amend now.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, we're saying the dimensions are not on the notice. So anyone who wanted to look at this would have seen the 7.4 dimension. So it has been properly
Okay.
noticed to the public, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, any, any more questions from the board?
So there would be an amendment?
Well, we're just, the applicant, when we approve, if we approve, we'll approve to 7.4.
When you, when you read what it says in the notice of disapproval, we'll add, I'll add a recital, you know, specifying the actual dimension that's being requested.
I mean, I was confused with a few things on the zoning chart because, and maybe it's because of the wetlands. I was very surprised at the amount of increased coverage here on a percentage basis.
Right.
And the impervious surface. Now, I understand the deck is more than 18 inches above, but it, were you doing something below the deck? Was it concrete?
Well, there's an existing concrete pad down there and the homeowner wanted to extend. Am I going the right way? They wanted to add more concrete or have more patio space below the proposed deck.
Okay.
So yes, we are adding to that.
Because there was, it was almost, what, just so I have 300 square feet and that couldn't have been the portico.
You had the portico, I think it's like 200, right, 273 square feet back here. And then the portico, a couple additional square feet of portico.
And it also is important to recognize that, you know, I paced this off at 39 feet from the curb to the house. Because there's also the, you know, the large front right away. And the design of this portico is actually smaller than the exact same design that is the house to the right. Is that, they've odd numbering, it might be like 16 or something, I don't, I don't know the number.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, it's odd numbering.
We've approved several porticos on that street.
Yeah, it's definitely consistent with what's being done in the balance. And all of these houses are all set forward. You know, it's amazing, you've got a mile in the backyard. And I have to assume that the zoning was done after these houses, you know, were built that was there.
Yeah, I think, I think this one was built in like, I think it was 47, then the zoning was what, 59 or something like that?
Right.
All right, any questions from anyone else on the board?
There's no problem with increasing that concrete surface.
No, it's, it's still well below the allowable coverage. I was just surprised at the percentage because I'm guessing that the wetland is excluded, that over 10% of this property is excluded from what you can consider for coverage because of the wetlands.
Yep.
But, you know, from a practical coverage standpoint, this house is probably, I don't know, 16, 17%.
Yeah, because that, I mean, it goes off the page here.
Right.
You're right, it's like a mile back there.
And this is an extension really of an existing deck, or you're just replacing and expanding?
Correct, replacing and expand, expanding the existing deck and putting new decking material down.
Right, but because it's over 18 inches, it has to be considered in the coverage.
Included in lot coverage.
Right. But I was surprised at the impervious surface, that's, but I understand now.
All right, anything else from the board? All right, Rich, anything outside?
Thing from outside.
Good. All right, motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Anyone want to tackle this one?
I'll do it.
Oh, thanks, Robin.
Okay, this is the application of Brandon and Erica Setcliffe, 20 Bonnie Way, Marchmont, for proposed one-story addition and front steps. The proposed addition in the front yard will be 27.7 feet where 40 is required. The proposed front steps will be 26.5 feet where 40 feet is required. And the proposed rear deck will be 7.4 feet where 10 feet is proposed. And the combined side yard setbacks will be 23.6 feet with 30, oh, I'm sorry, that 23 point is it still six feet? Where 30 feet is required?
I should try to figure that out right now.
The combined, that changes it, the 7.4 changed the combined to be 23.2? Is that correct?
Oh, because the other side is
Does that sound right to everyone? Just want to make sure that's correct.
What were the amounts again, Robin?
23.2.
I'm sorry, the combined side yard setbacks.
Which is the 23.2.
Okay, will be 23.2.
Right, okay, where 30 feet is required. The board finds that the benefit to the applicant from the granting of the variance outweighs any detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or community. In reaching this conclusion, the board considered the following factors. Whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties will be created. No, in fact, in terms of the portico, it's smaller than the house to the right. And we've improved, we've approved several porticos on that street and it would be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. In terms of the deck, it also would, is consistent, I guess, with the character of the neighborhood and it would, it, it's just replacing the existing deck and expanding the, that existing deck. Whether an applicant can achieve their goals via a reasonable alternative, which does not involve the necessity of an area variance. The the portico is considered an improvement to the existing front porch but or front portico. And the house is already non-conforming. The, also the portico I'm going to add, will add is brick rather than the siding, which is also consistent with the rest of the house and will improve the character of the house. And in terms of the deck, there is no other reasonable alternative for where to put an expansion of the deck. Whether the variance is substantial, no. It's relatively minor and reasonable, considering the needs of the homeowner and the impact on the community. Whether the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district, no, it will increase the concrete surface under the deck, adding to the impervious surface, but that is not significant or substantial. Whether there has been a self-created difficulty, yes, but that is not determinative in this situation.
Sorry. It's not substantial because
It's not substantial because it is a well variance in terms of the footage. The rear deck is consistent with, it lines up with the garage and doesn't change the appearance of the it lines up with the garage and therefore is
Doesn't increase the non-conformity?
Yeah. Bulk to the house, right?
Correct, doesn't need any bulk to the house. It doesn't, because it lines up, doesn't extend beyond where the garage would extend. And as I had stated, the portico is smaller than the house to the right and consistent with other houses in the neighborhood and
Robin, would you want to talk to substantiality because of the extremely large lot size here? And that the addition on a percentage basis is extremely small?
That's correct. On a percentage basis, it's extremely small, given the large size of the lot.
All right. Are we all settled? A motion to approve?
We need a second.
I second.
Brandon?
Vote?
Who?
I just need to vote.
Yes, yes.
Oh, oh, yes.
Thank you all, thank you all for your time this evening.
Good night. Have a good weekend. Motion to open the public hearing?
Back in.
All right, who's representing the homeowner? Rich, do you have any, is there some? I can't understand what you're saying.
Yes, sorry, yes, I'm right here, can you hear me okay? All right, my name is Alvaro Bonfiglio. I am with Ready Made Architects and I am representing Laura Bardier today. I will share my screen, I will try to be brief, it's so really late. Can you see my screen now?
No.
Nothing yet?
It's starting, give it a second. Screen's still blank.
I can see it fine.
You can see it?
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Questions, comments from the board? All right, Rich, anything outside?
Let's see if anybody's out there.
All right, good.
There were, we knocked them out.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing? Great. Anyone want to do the motion to approve or motions?
I think I can do this.
Thank you, thank you.
Case 3228, Laura Bedear at 79 Myrtle Boulevard is seeking to do an addition on the second floor at the 79 Myrtle Boulevard. The addition will have a side yard of 6.1 feet where 8 feet is required. And the combined side yards will be 14.4 feet where 18 feet are required. This is an existing non-conforming home and the addition will increase the extent of the non-conformity. The board, when looking at this variance, balanced the benefit to the applicant with a detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the community. In doing so, it first determined whether an undesirable change in the neighborhood character or whether it be an undesirable change in nearby properties. The board finds that the addition, which goes up in the existing footprint of the house, will not create an undesirable effect on the neighborhood. Myrtle Boulevard is a tight street that's out here and the addition actually leaves a significant amount, almost 577 square feet of additional available FAR. So it doesn't even come close to maximizing the 26, 2760 that's available to it. And it is consistent with other homes. There actually is a buffer between this home of two driveways, creating one of the larger separations that are on the street. The architect has looked at alternative plans that were there and found this was the best to keep the bulk and massing down, so it shouldn't have any effect on the properties. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasibly applicant, as stated previously, the architect has looked at multiple designs and this appeared to be the best one to help achieve getting the master onto the second floor to allow them to have the bedroom on the first floor to accommodate a elderly family member. Whether the request is substantial, the board finds a request is not substantial, primarily from the standpoint that it leaves available FAR on the house, doesn't max out the property, that the house addition will sit in the existing footprint, so it doesn't increase any of the impervious surface or anything else. Whether the request only had adverse physical environmental effects, it's previously stated Whether the question on adverse physical environmental effects, it's previously stated, it exists in the existing footprint. So it may have a marginal effect on light and air, but not meaningful to the house that's houses next door. Whether or not the difficulty is self-created, it is clearly self-created because the applicant wishes to add this master of which the FAR for is, is as of right. But it's not determinative in this matter. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
We need a second.
Yes, second somebody. All right. Francine, roll call.
Irene?
Yes.
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Hi.
And who seconded that?
I did.
Carol, Carol, thank you.
Okay. I can enjoy their addition.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I'm sorry I didn't share my Oreos with everybody.
All right, so we need to establish whether or not the Brookside property was properly no, noticed.
It's very clear what Irene brought up when I look at the survey that we have, you know, this arrow here and that clearly that backside of the lot is on Lansdowne. I didn't recognize that. And I also came down Lansdowne. I didn't see a sign.
Yeah, I didn't see a sign.
It's all wooded, you know, I just looked at the Google. And it's not like there's an open lot there. But I think we leave this to council.
I didn't go around, but I know my code enforcement officer did. He said that he saw signs. Whether he was thinking the same thing you were, Jonathan, I don't know. But he did say he saw signs at all the.
Did he see, did he see a sign on Lansdowne? That is so weird. This is such a weird case.
Well, he may not have been looking on Lansdowne. If there's street frontage on, if the property fronts on Lansdowne, but it doesn't, but the code enforcement officer didn't realize that, then he wouldn't have noticed it was missing. So we should ask.
Do we have, should we have brought the applicant in for this discussion?
Yeah, we should do that.
Yes.
Yes, I, I need to note that I know the applicant, but but the applicant is an acquaintance of mine, but it will not affect my determination.
Thank you. All right.
Put a second loaded. Hi, good evening. Steven Bassini, you're architect for the applicant. I believe Nina and Jeff are joining us as well. Thank you for including us in this conversation.
Thank you.
So, so the question is, did you post a sign on Lansdowne?
Well, Nina and Jeff have just joined. They were handling the signage, so I'll let them discuss. They posted one, I know, on, on, on Brookside and I believe that they were only asked to, to post one specifically because at the time of the discussion, but I can let them talk about that.
Hi, hi, thank you very much for hearing our case. I specifically spoke to Francine at least three times for this procedure, for this notice procedure. And I recall specifically, she said, no, your house is not on a corner. You just have to put it, get one sign to put in the front. So I said, okay, are you sure? She said, yes.
Right, I'm gonna pull up the code, but I think unfortunately the way the code is written, it's, that is what determines the signage, not what the building department informs you. So I'm, as much as I would like to override it, the code doesn't allow us to do that. So let me just first pull up the code and see exactly what it says. Okay.
The front of the subject property.
Yeah, it shall be no more than 10 feet back from the edge of the paved portion of the street abutting the subject property's front lot line. So it's because it's not a corner lot, it only has one front lot line. Is that correct?
No.
The survey identifies.
It's not a corner lot.
Survey identifies a second front yard. That's, that's why this is coming up.
I guess it's not a corner lot by definition as a standard corner lot, as the arrow heads, you explained. So I think that's where the exception may come in.
So it still has two front yards.
Yeah, I mean, so we need signage for any front lot line. If there's more than one front lot line, we need more than one sign. So that's what it will, that's what will determine how many front lot lines are there.
Are you asking, I'm sorry, or you, you're stating, so I got it.
You need a sign
Okay.
For any front lot line abutting a street. So how many front lot lines are there abutting the street? Does, is Lans, is Lansdowne a front lot line, but?
Maybe I could get, ask for Mr. Bocari for a determination on that.
Sorry, I just, I just came back. Yes, it would be a front lot.
Yeah, it's, it's right on, it's right on the plans. It indicates a second front lot line. Now, I don't know that there's not a reason that we can't extend to allow the applicant to do their presentation and then request an adjournment to correct the issue and they could ask to take a straw poll. If they choose to, or they could just adjourn.
Would they have, can we, can we do the approval tonight or do we have, wait, no, we could just listen, okay.
It hasn't, it hasn't been noted. It hasn't been noticed. You don't have the ability for public comment. But I believe we could choose as a courtesy if we wanted to hear it, or they could just choose to adjourn later.
They would not have to renotice, correct Lisa?
They don't have to do another mailing. They just have to repost the sign on. Lansdowne, yes.
Yes, yes, yeah.
I, I don't know, I don't know if I'm correct, Lisa, because does that, did that preclude the ability of the public to hear?
You can't, you cannot open a public hearing if it hasn't been properly noticed.
Okay.
But we've heard, we've, I believe we've heard situations in this, in this case.
No.
Okay.
This is, this is the first time this has come up.
Chair, may I ask, actually, I think you, you're all right. And I mean, at least from my knowledge, you can't open a public hearing if that's not properly notified, which I, I thought it was, but i- if it's not, there still is in, in, in all boards, I believe zoning planning or any other board, you can still hear an application for, like Jonathan said, to at least give an opinion. So we know.
Hear it. We can hear, we just can't, we just can't give you a verdict.
And at this point, if that's what we, if that's what we're allowed to do, then that's what we'll take. I mean, I don't know how far, you know, the cravices are here. We want to, we want to push this discussion. But I'd love to be able to hear your opinion so that we know what we stand.
I'm just saying the best we can give you is you can request a straw poll and that's, you know.
Yeah, I, I think we also need to note that we're missing two regular members tonight. And no matter what we say tonight, if we take a straw poll.
Right.
Can change. Next time, when we have two new people here with whatever.
We have five people. Normal, I don't know if they were on for this, and I, I obviously got on late. Normally, the board consists of five members, five voting members. And tonight, we do not, we only have four, which we cannot vote on your matter, but if we were to vote, you would need three out of four affirmative or it would be denial. So keep that in the back of your mind, but a straw poll is not going to determine anything really. But we'd be happy to hear the case if you want to present.
Understood. I mean, even just, even your feedback is valuable, so.
That's fine. That's fine. Go ahead. Please start.
Thank you. I will share the screen. Assuming you all can see that. So as we've already discussed, it is an arrow shaped lot, an arrowhead shaped lot. The frontage is off of 83 West Brookside and now we're discussing the Lansdowne as well. And as the board member just mentioned, it's, it's very well vegetated over here and it's really not visible. I don't know that that necessarily comes into effect in this discussion. But the, the variances are side yards anyway and not necessarily front or rear. So the, the proposal, you know, the cravices have two daughters, they have who are growing up and obviously eventually will need more space. And the proposal here is to develop the set, the existing half story that exists. And you can see from the existing elevations here, this is the half story that exists over the house right now. And if I go to a quick section, you'll see what really exists upstairs. You're talking about, about seven foot high ceiling heights over about an eight foot stretch, seven and a half foot stretch, totaling about 270 square feet actually of usable space over seven feet or just about seven feet. So it really truly is a half story. There are no dormers. There are only windows out the sides here and here, and there are no dormers. So it's really a, it's more of a play area. The existing spaces labeled bedrooms, but basically that's what they're, you know, the anticipation was to be able to use those for, but they're just unusable at this point. So you've got a small bedroom here. This is really a loft, an open loft area at the top of the stairs with access to a storage area underneath this roof and a bathroom in the corner. And again, it's, it's very low ceilings at the ends here where the walls are, it's only about five feet. So the idea is to expand this space within the perimeter of the existing building and develop two bedrooms, a little loft area, TV area and an office. This is what was submitted to the zoning board initially, and then since then, it's been, you know, developed on the drawing board, so to speak. So I'm going to jump to that just real quick to show you what it is that we propose. So on that floor, what we're proposing is two bedrooms in the rear of the home. Existing bedrooms downstairs are, the girls' bedrooms are 120 square feet and 130 square feet. We're looking at these bedrooms at about 200 to 230 square feet. They're growing girls, obviously they need more closet space and, and space for, you know, furniture and just for the living. Also, there really is no space downstairs for, for them to hang out and, and, and with friends. So we're creating a TV room upstairs, which was that loft I showed on the zoning board application drawing. And then as we've all experienced in the last year, home office space is, is a commodity. And so everyone's working from home and, and nothing's different here in the Cravitz household. So they needed space for an office. So that is the actual corner over there would be for, for their home office. So the perimeter of the house again is, is about 33 by 39. And going back to the site plan, it is not outside of the perimeter of the existing home. Problem is because this lot is an arrow shaped lot and it is comparable to other lots on this block, all about two tenths to three tenths of an acre. The width here is only about 53 feet. And so in a 40 foot home, it already overlaps these setbacks. And so you'll see here on the, on the west side, it's about a quarter of the house is within the proper, is within the setback. So what we're requesting is three, three variances. One over here is a seven foot where we need 10 foot in the side yard. Here we're asking for six feet where we need 10 in the side yard. And then you see in the zoning table, those two together, seven and six, 13, we need 25. So we're asking for a 12 foot combined variance. Again, we're not asking to go outside the setback at all. The roof eve is allowed to, you know, extend anyway. So really we are within the perimeter of the existing house. And the only thing we're really adding is, is height. And I guess you could say bulk as well. As you go to the comparative elevations, you can see obviously in this elevation to this elevation, we're adding that volume. But again, what we're, what we have upstairs is total from, from knee wall to knee wall, about 600 square feet. What we're adding is 600 square feet by doing this. And, and it, it creates more usable bedrooms, more usable space, a little more expanded play area and office and all within the confines of the existing perimeter. So as far as the bulk is concerned, I think it's about, it's very valuable to, to the homeowners. And the height of the building overall still is about 25% less than what is allowed on the zoning table. It's, it's 18.2 existing, it would be 26.2 proposed where 35 is allowed. So when you're speaking of volume, I think that the, the resultant bulk of this house is still under what could be and is still just as valuable to the owners. And as far as, you know, what's going on in the neighborhood, I mean, there are homes obviously that have two stories on the block specifically. If you go just down a few houses, 65 West Brookside, two-story, 69 West Brookside, two-story, 71 West Brookside, same situation, going across that little stream there. Just, you know, about a 200 feet away is 90 East Brookside, 92 East Brookside and 100 East Brookside. And again, these lots, except for the exception of 100 East Brookside, which has a double sized lot, they're all comparable about two to three tenths of an acre. And so the bulk and the size of these houses are on the same exact lot area, except for the fact, again, this is such an irregular shaped lot that we have stricter confines. So I would ask that the variance be granted on those grounds and if you know, I don't think it does not change the character of the neighborhood as I discussed. It's, I've showed you pictures of other houses with comparable heights and bulk. And as far as an impact on the on the on the environment, there is none. I mean, we're not adding any more impervious surfaces. We are building over what's existing there and there's really no negative impact. I mean, as far as being self, you know, requested variance is, is valuable to them. And I believe it should it, it, it should count out that fifth item in the New York state law as far as being, you know, self-imposed.
Okay, thank, thank you. I have only one question, which is, does the exterior elevation, you reworked the floor plan a little bit on the second floor. Does, is the exterior elevation the same?
It does, actually. These, these elevations here.
Yes.
These elevations here are the same. You see 2212 here. All, all of those, if I go down to the elevations are the same, you know, if you got the front here, it's, it's all the same. I mean, if there's a window shifted here or there, it's all, it's all the same.
Fine, okay. Anyone, questions from the board?
I'm going to assume that we probably have around 4,000 square feet available of FAR here. Probably, you said it's a 600 square foot footprint, so you're probably only using about 1,200 square feet of FAR.
Yes.
Right? Correct. I believe I have the zoning table. Yeah, sorry, I don't have it.
I didn't see it in the zoning table. The, the package is incomplete compared to what you're presenting. It'd be helpful next time if you make sure that you get the complete package. I didn't see any interior dimensioning, which you're now showing us.
Understood. It was, it was being developed at the time and you're right. The FAR however, is on the zoning data table that was submitted. It's 4,300 allowed, existing is 2277, proposed is 2677, so.
Didn't make it in my, just didn't make it in my package, I guess. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any audience questions, Rich? No. All right, no, nothing else from the board? You want to do a straw poll? I assume there, you, Steven, you would, Steven Bassini, you would like to a straw poll of the board?
I would, please.
That's fine.
Understanding, understanding it does not hold the value of a regular vote.
We, yes, you have to understand, yes, anything can happen in a month from now. All right, shoot, how do we handle that?
Irene, can I just ask one question? There's been, I understand that there was additional notice signage is required, but with the signage that was there, there were no objection from any neighbors. Just wanna note that.
Note that.
And support, support, actually.
Yeah, yes.
Were there letters of support?
There was verbal. I can, the, the Cravitzes spoke with them and, and actually were very happy because I guess the previous owners said obviously that, that, that little loft space is just a, it's not attractive from the outside. It's not usual from the inside. And I think they were very happy that they were finally doing something with the appearance of the house and that roof.
I would imagine.
They were talking about the prior owners.
Yeah, yes.
Well, they were saying the prior owners hadn't done anything to it and they were happy that Cravitzes now are.
It'll, it'll definitely improve the character of the neighborhood in my view. Do you want to do a straw poll? Do we, Lisa, should we do it or should?
Yeah, you can just go around and each person can share whatever they feel comfortable sharing with the knowledge that it does not in any way bind to any of you for what you do next month.
I can start. I'd be very comfortable approving this, doesn't change footprint, improves the character of the house, would enhance the neighborhood. I have no issues with this. would enhance the neighborhood. I have no issues with this addition. So I would vote to approve if we were voting tonight.
I wouldn't have any objections presented.
I wouldn't have any, I wouldn't have any objections either, and I would just say that it's, you know, putting a second story is exceedingly consistent with all the other houses in the neighborhood. I think that, you know, what you're doing fits right in and just create any issues. And truthfully, the, considering how bizarre the lot is, and where you are to begin with, with the setbacks, it's not a, you know, major, you know, increase.
We do apologize for the inconvenience that you're being, is you're being burdened with because of the unusual nature of the lot. I'll leave it at that. Robin, do you?
Yes, I would also approve. I just want to point out that no impervious surfaces are going to be added. They're adding over what's already there, and that the, the FAR is, they're not using up the available FAR, so it's reasonable for what they need.
Great.
All right, so it seems like you don't need to make any changes to your application. I would just let you know that although this board usually meets on the fourth Wednesday of the month, next month, there's been a change in date. It's going to be June 16th. So just make sure both signs are posted 14 days ahead of June 16th.
Can I just ask, sorry, this is Mr. Cravitz. I'm the, I'm one of the owners. Can I just ask, since whoever drove by the house, what would be the, the right place to put the sign? Because we have a lot of bushes there. I don't know where to hang it.
I, I'd put it close to the, I will, I, I'm the one who noticed it. I would put it fairly close to the sidewalk. You don't want it so buried that no one can see it, but I would not, I mean, it's, it, you, you don't need it. I, I would put it inside, not, not outside the sidewalk, because the problem you could have is some child may decide to just take it out of the ground.
What the code requires is that it shall be no more than 10 feet back from the edge of the paved portion of the street abutting the subject property's front lot line.
Yeah, so I'd put it just inside, try to put it inside the sidewalk, but, um, keep an eye on it, keep an eye on it, just in case it might be tempting to a child walking home from school.
You see the screen, by the way? Can it go on the telephone pole?
Is that, is that, no, it can't go on a telephone pole. Is that large tree to your right? Go to the right.
Yeah, that tree.
Can it be nailed to that tree or attached to that tree? That's, that's less than 10 feet from the edge of the road. You put it up on the tree.
Yeah.
Perfectly able to see it.
Jeff, can you?
I don't know if we can. We could try. I also don't know if that's 10 feet or not, but we can check.
If you have any.
Within, within 10 feet, so it can be on a stake right here. I mean, right, it can be, if we can get it on a stake right here in the bush, it could just be set right there.
Yeah.
I think.
Just has to be conspicuous.
And this, and the sign that we have in the front now says that there's a meeting today. Do we have to get a new sign?
Change the date. Just June 16th.
Yeah, just put tape or something over it and put June 16th.
Yeah, so both signs have to be there, you're saying?
Yeah, get the other one out tomorrow.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Well, I have to go make it tomorrow, so once I make it, I can put it out, so.
Right.
Understood.
What if they only call me at 5:00 and I can't get it by 5:00?
You don't know, you, you have until June 2nd to put it out.
June 2nd, next Wednesday.
Two weeks.
I was looking at his schedule when he brought it up, and I think I was off on the weekend.
So I have until when? I'm sorry.
June 2nd, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
To put it up.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And if you're interested in just double-checking, it's Section 144-4 of the town code spells, spells out the signage requirements.
It's also, it's also on the bottom of the checklist.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well said. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So can I make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
Second. Hi.
Did we have, wait, did we have the people here? We have.
And I would assume.
Irene, Jonathan, and Carol, is that good enough?
Yeah, I'm gonna have Robin. I'll have you abstain, since you weren't there for the minutes.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and so Jonathan made the motion, and who seconded?
I did. Irene.
Irene, okay, and then, got it.
And our next meeting, I'm sorry, was what date?
June 16th. What's that noise? A dog?
That's supposed to be the Mamaroneck High School Dance Under the Stars.
Oh my God. Are we all set, Lisa? We good to go? Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.